Call the meeting to order. Before we call the meeting to order, can we take a moment just to remember all those that lost their life on this day in two thousand? Thank you. All right, we will call the meeting to order. Uh, we have a shared vision in the Fern Ridge School District, provide excellence for every student so that each will reach their greatest potential. We are always happy to have parents and other community members at our meeting. Thank, thank you to those, to the members of the public who are, have joined us. As a reminder, school board meetings are, and work sessions are meetings of the board held in public, providing an opportunity to observe the board's discussions and actions. In an effort to conduct official board business, we ask that the audience be respectful and refrain from questions, comments, and unnecessary noise while the board conducts the meeting. We'd all stand for the flag, so the first.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
So our only agenda item tonight is our two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school board goals. So we will start off with um, just a little bit from uh, Mr. Carpenter about some guidance that he received from OSBA in regards to goals.
Um, okay, I'll just summarize, I met with her after the last meeting, just to kind of confirm. I shared it all with you in my Friday update, just kind of a reminder, I guess. Remember your goal should be typed in your role, it should be big, big picture. Or slash, the term she used was thirty thousand foot level goals. Uh, the recommendation limit is three, she gave examples. Um, a variety of things I shared with you. Um, kind of an action plan that has a goal, one, two, three. Obviously, these goals are yours. You can go with these three or three totally different ones, but at least it's a starting point.
All right, so we do have these three goals to consider. I'll open it up to discussion on goals. What I'm hoping for is that we can come to consensus tonight of the goals, and then we'll have this on the agenda for the regular meeting to make a motion and approve them that night.
Well, I think these are all fine, so. I. I don't have, I don't have anything to discuss about them at this point.
I think maybe going through one by one, piece at a time would be the best, and just overall. The A and A.
Okay. So do you want me to read the first goal and action plans, or just you're just gonna read it on your own?
Yeah, you can read it, so.
Well, I do have a question, I do have, is, is there anything that this board sees that they would like to look towards for our goals? So we have budget, we have budget, we have superintendent staff, and then.
No, just superintendent.
We have superintendent. Is there, is there, we hire the superintendent?
Is that part of what our responsibilities are?
Yeah, hiring responsibility, this is, this is superintendent.
One of our responsibilities is the hiring of the superintendent. And he is responsible for everything else regarding staff.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
And um, and the students. So, you know, my thought in this is that if we're going to be a goal board, that we would put together a goals that we would like to see. But if everybody has no um, no input or anything.
Well, do you have any input on goal number one?
Oh, it's not just rule number one, I mean.
It's a goal, it's a goal.
It is a goal, but it's, what do we want to see as a board? What would we, what would we like to see as a board to move forward for our goals?
I like these.
I like these three.
Yeah, I think these fit perfect with what our, our role is as a board.
Barbara? We have an agreement, but again, if you have a question or a concern, I think it's open for you to present it so we can discuss it. You're not sharing, I'm not hearing your points and what, it, it, it appears as if you have a different view, or you want to see something different. So you can share that with us so we can have a discussion around it.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so I was looking at the, the goals here and the goals that um superintendent gave us. And I myself was trying to figure out three things that we could work on and have measurable units that we can monitor throughout the year to see how everything is going. And the things that I came up with, it was a professional development, and he does have professional development on there, okay? One of the things is community. Um, that is community, and if I'm not reading this right, that would. One of the stakeholders.
Community.
Community, um, staff, parents.
Anybody engaged with the school, our students, our parents, or community groups?
Yeah, PTA pals.
So this is um, professional development, which I think is great, and then the community, you all know, I think that is great. And then for the number two, it was to identify and prioritize student needs, I'm all for that, and holds themselves accountable, holds who, who accountable? The board?
Us.
That's what I was, so holding the board accountable for meeting all student learning expectations.
By monitoring the progress, you gotta finish the sentence, by monitoring progress of the district goals.
So our thought there, and again, it came from the OSBA lady, and I stuck this goal in because from the conversation I heard last time, it seemed like it might fit what you folks were wanting. So we have our five uh, goals in our integrated plan. Third grade reading, K-12 attendance, ninth grade on track, four-year graduation, five-year graduation. So I think it's one of the board's roles is checking in with Gary, Michelle, the district, how we're making progress on those goals, give us a report. So my thought would be possibly December, March, June. Give a presentation to you on, here was our five goals we talked about in August and September, we're doing our integrated plan. Here's our first December check-in, do a presentation to you on uh, why our goal was around K-12 attendance, and we're doing terrible. This is what we've tried, isn't going well, we gotta try something new. Here's our goals on third grade reading, a lot of improvement, this is the things we've tried. So give, get an update to the board on kind of our strategies and what it's looking like on the ground. Some of those things like four-year graduation, five-year graduation, probably won't be more, we won't have more data around those until June time. Um, but even the third grade assessments, which won't have taken place by December, we can still share data with you around interim assessments they took in, and those kinds of things. So that goes specifically around um, allowing the board to monitor the district's progress towards our goals. Sets up three times that we would come and present on the goals, and the board could provide feedback on, hey, good job on the third grade reading, what are you gonna do differently around attendance that hasn't gone so well? Talk about that.
So do you still want to go from one by one then?
Um, yes, please.
Okay, and you wanted me to read them, is that what you said? Okay, the Fern Ridge School District Board will commit to continuous board, board professional development to continue to understand their roles and responsibilities, authority and limits. So the action plan would be to continue to be knowledgeable about the policymaking process and budgeting process and ensuring policies created and resources allocated are aligned with the district goals. The board will calendar at a minimum one board professional development training and one, and attend one OSBA conferences annually. Of course, conference annually, uh, the superintendent will send the board information on one professional development topic relative to either the time of year, a need, or a topic that is being discussed each month throughout the school year. So that's kind of a back, that number three is like a best practice type thing for the board. Same thing as professional development, but sometimes people here call it best practices.
So have we um, have we already had an OSBA presentation?
Yeah.
That will.
Everybody that attended, uh, everybody that attended the retreat, you know, um, was a PD trainee, and everybody that went to the summer conference already has that one checked out, and still have another opportunity. Well, next summer we will, in the fall and November. Um, number three, you know, is just something we started last year. Uh, so I'll just pick a Friday, second Friday, third Friday of the month, I'll pick a topic. Send probably either you, either one item in my Friday update, or a totally separate email on PD for the month. Um, maybe, for example, all sports was a big thing right now, maybe I might send you some PD around OSAA requirements, reclassification, they're starting to go through that process, or how we keep our kids, um, how we track athletic eligibility.
Maybe their emergency action plan, maybe just a sample of what that is.
About that, there'd be some topic relevant fact into the time of the year or something that's being discussed. Um, and then really number one is just, you know, we, about your own kind of questions and answers, whether it's reaching out to uh, me or reading on your own, um, around our budget process, or, you know, just making sure you're up to speed on questions, generally, however. This is a goal we've had the last couple of years, and it, this went relatively well.
I agree. Any other comments on goal one or the action plan, anything you'd like to add or?
Well, I, I would just um, encourage all of us to um, to try to find the information um, before reaching out to other staff members, just so that we are familiar with both the website and OSB's, OSBA's website. And um, we're not taking precious time away from other duties that um, people are also needing to take care of.
One thing I had to is, you know, I see, the way I see it, once you guys agree to whatever the goals are, um, and our action plan, we can make adjustments to the action plan throughout the year. So.
Right.
Something else, we'll say the community relations piece, maybe a board member starts having coffees and daily bread every ten AM, well, we'll have that, but one of our tasks, one of our board members was doing, so.
Or maybe we want to bring in someone from OSBA for another.
Yeah.
Training of some sort, that we find that.
Those will always be in flux throughout the year, and then at the end of the year, those, those steps will be kind of things that we evaluate and say, hey, we did a good job, everybody attended a conference, we did the things that we said we were gonna do, or not.
And we also have those OSB recurring training that we're required to, yeah, so, and then I think.
There's tons of workshops on there.
Yes.
Yeah, there's lots of topics on there.
Measurable.
Yeah.
You can tell that we've done it. Because that's a big thing, we can't, I write what I have it, so those are some of the things we cover.
Any other comments on goal one or the action plans? So do we have a consensus for, for goal one? Yeah, all right. And goal number two, the Fern Ridge School District Board will use data to identify and prioritize, prioritize, prioritize student needs and hold themselves accountable for meeting all student learning expectations by monitoring the progress of the district goals. Uh, the action plan, number one, the board collaboratively with, with the superintendent and key stakeholders will create a monitoring plan. The board will identify one, two pieces of data or information to track the progress of, of district goals. Number two, the board will calendar at a minimum three monitoring plan sessions during board meetings to review and discuss the progress of the district goals and review the data from item number one. Number three, the superintendent or director of K-12 programs will coordinate these presentations.
Yeah, so and then kind of looking at the year and thinking about this a little bit, I think the three months I'd recommend of the, of this goal would be, I guess, the December, March, and June. Uh, and we could talk about, uh, I probably want to meet with a couple of folks and I probably recommend uh, some pieces of data that we'll bring to these meetings, but after I present that to you, if there's other data that you want to see, let me know, we can do that as well, certainly. Um, what kind of data in December will we have around third grade reading, this Marshall? It's kind of our spectrum of type of one kids and where they fell.
Yeah, we have our fall benchwork data, that's what they're doing right now, by December you have at least one progress monitor, we have classroom data, um, probably no in our assessment. But lots of good.
Yeah, we have, we have good stuff on third grade reading, we got good stuff on uh, K-12 attendance, and, and we probably be able to tell you where our ninth graders are at, on track, it won't really be final till the end of the first semester if they're on track. But we can tell you currently if the semester was over in December, these are the number of kids that are on track, um, or not, so. Um, and then as we get further in the year, we, you know, identify kids that are at risk of not graduating or whatever, we could um, probably possess some data there, and certainly June, um, on the graduation rate stuff, so. Um, the other thing that I might add on here that I didn't add, um, it would be about uh, maybe in number three, uh, the superintendent and director of K-12 programs will coordinate these possession, uh, presentations um, and invite some, for lack of a better term right now, I'll say some key folks, so depending on the day, we might invite a, a third grade teacher to talk, or Mr. Schmidt who's working on attendance at the high school, um, things like that.
But I, I, I do want to make it clear that you are responsible for inviting those individuals and, and we are not. We are not to do that.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't let you guys to have to do that, we'd set up who was governor presenting, obviously if somebody had something in particular that you, you know, as the months, as we move towards, toward December, if collectively as the board, you decided, hey, we want to hear from somebody, we can talk about that directly to you. All, all certainly, if this is a goal we go at, as we get closer to December, we'll have a plan and a structure that I'll share with you in November, and get any feedback on, hey, here's what I think it's gonna look like next month, who's coming, what we're gonna share with you.
All right, anything to add to that or? Change? And take it we all have consensus that that's a goal number two for us? Great. Goal number three, the Fern Ridge School District Board will continue to find meaningful ways within their authority to engage and receive input from stakeholders to help the board make informed decisions. Action plan number one, the board and superintendent will invite key stakeholders to the monitoring planning sessions to ensure the district goals are, slash, remain in alignment with the needs of all students. Number two, the board will implement its new student school board liaison policy and develop a plan for their participation in reporting in monthly board meetings. Number three, the superintendent will continue to engage with the monthly key communicator group. Number four, continue to support and promote the public comment portion of board meetings that takes place near the beginning of regular board meeting agendas.
Another thing I would just add on here for sure already would be, you know, our continued use of Parents Square and trying to, trying to promote that is, utilize it buildings in district-wide, um, will certainly be another way that keeps us engaged with the community and when we go to our Parents Square, shares it to our website, shares social media, all that.
I've really, I've really appreciated the Parents Square that I've so far experienced. Um, so will the student board members be here?
I went to high school today to meet with them, one of them was absent, I chatted with the other one, kind of told them what is expected to come to our regular meetings, first one, follow up, further out, uh, um, then in general, in particular, this might kind of evolve, but at least for this first one, uh, that he should connect with his peer. Um, and, you know, so they're not reporting on the same thing. I asked, uh, Four J had done this, had done this for a couple of years, and asked Sydney what kind of their practice was there, and um, uh, we're kind of modeling that, so they'll write down what they're going to talk about and share it with Sydney, um, by Friday at noon. She'll say, yeah, that looks good. I talked to them about, you know, it's okay to share, um, to not have it all be roses and butterflies. If you got a concern, hey, there's lunches are too cold or whatever, it's okay, we'll talk about stuff like that. But I also went into, what we don't say is, um, you know, calling out individuals if they have a problem with a staff member or something, there's another process for that here in our meeting, that wouldn't be okay, so we went over it's, you know, great to celebrate things, great to talk about some challenges we're working on, or, or things where um, that are happening at the high school, we all see, he seemed on board, Sydney's gonna meet with the other kid when he comes back, he'll be here Monday night.
So I would also encourage them to ask questions about processes and um, just they shouldn't feel, you know, and I'll probably say this to them, but they shouldn't feel shy about raising their hands and saying, I'm sorry, I don't understand that, or I don't know that acronym.
I didn't mention to him, because occasionally, then in general, put them at the start of the agenda, I told them at the end of the year, we want to warn you five hundred dollars scholarship, if you need to be at these ten meetings, at the same time, when emergencies come up, if there's, or something you need to leave after you present, maybe let the board chair know, I also told them, we can even log you in virtually if there's some other conflict. Um, and I mentioned that, you know, throughout the meeting, there might be a topic the board is discussing where they might have a question for you, so. So while you're, you're right at the start, giving your little spiel, um, stay engaged with what's happening, because they might turn to you at some point and say, what do you think, Gavin?
Yes. So I'm excited. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, okay.
But which one on number four, we had talked before at a school board meeting about um, the community stakeholders would be able to have a time where they can talk, we talked that whole. We talked about um, how they have public comment in the beginning, but the po- public comment is really a point where they can say something, there's not a whole lot of, there is, I don't think there is any discussion um, or anything like that, but to include the community and to be able to hear them, we talked about adding something at the end. So does this also include adding something at the end for them?
No.
I can probably recall that.
Yeah, no, I don't either, but it's not a public meeting, so, you know, they have a chance to give public comment during our meeting, which is held in public. So it's not a public meeting to where there's question and answer with public.
And it, it is, um, so in the past, um, when audiences have been respectful um, and raised their hands and um, made positive or asked questions in a positive way, um, there has been some interaction. Um, I am not sure that um, the audiences at this point are um, are gonna be positive.
Well, just you shouldn't really, the main thing is, neither these to be open the whole time, which definitely is not best practice. And as soon as you're kind of allowed, well, that's just, that's what it is. So community members have opportunities to communicate with school board members, you know, they can give you a call, they can shoot you an email, you can meet with them and have a coffee at any time. I've never received an email, a phone call, or a request for a meeting from a community member to have, I want to talk. So they should be coming and um, you know, if they have, will take the, the, the position, they have a concern, right? If it comes down, or a question comes out, it may even be in top of me, but open flow, but that would be, and I've seen this, that would be a special board meeting. That would be called a um, yeah, what's the term? Listening session, so let's say we had a topic one time, like, the only time I remember us doing that was when we closed No-Tie in Central Elementary. We had a community listening session at the middle school, and that was really just community members um, voicing a concern and some response back and kind of open dialogue. So if there ever was some specific topic that the board collectively thought, let's have a listening session on that, I'll give you hypothetical. Maybe Gary thinks it's a good idea that we go to a K-two elementary school and a three-five elementary school. That would create a lot of kerfuffle, you might want to have a listening session on a topic like that. Um, so, but a regular board meeting, like Mark said, it's you holding your meeting in public. It's not meant to be an exchange back and forth with the guys.
Okay, so then I'm still at the point, and I was here at that point too, is when do we hear what the community has to say?
Well, you got some letters, you got some letters, there's always something to be talking, I mean, we all got letters, and that's, that's a time that we.
You can hear them speak at the start.
Yeah, anyone can speak at a start.
They can, they can talk about any topic, we don't, uh, when they submit their letter of intent, we don't screen those, it's, that would be when you'll get to hear from them. And then if, you know, there was some follow-up, let's say Mr. Cooper came and he spoke on something, really, really don't want dialogue back and forth, but you might take a little note. And then, you know, maybe it's something that we get on the agenda next time to talk about what he said, or you're emailing me, um, what about Mr. Cooper said, is that accurate? Let you know, so, um, but it just will create problems from all sides, whether it's positive or negative, if, if there's dialogue like this. That isn't, this is meant for you guys to do your business, them to be able to watch you do your business. Um, we do offer this public comment, which we don't have to offer, it's not required that we allow folks to speak at the start of our board readings, but makes sense, you know, we want to hear, um, so as far as the question of when we get to hear from them, that, that's the primary way. We've never had more than two or three speakers, we can accept up to ten, perhaps, I don't think people want to talk.
And there's, and there's times where people, you know, like Ms. Marshall gives a presentation on, on, on SIA money or something like that, and if people have questions about that, they can contact her. And have, you know, ask, answer questions instead of doing it during the meeting, or even clarifying something during the meeting, it would be afterward, either afterwards if she has the time and wants to stay around and talk to them, or if she says, you know, give me a call tomorrow when I'm at work, or she can email, so, um, you know, that, there, there were never, if somebody else gives a presentation, that'd be the same thing, they could contact that person. Because most likely, it wouldn't be probably something the board that would deal with anyway.
I can see where a board member, you know, coming into this, and I, well, I just want to hear from folks more, um, you know, and I, I would, I guess, take out offers, you can do that, you know, on your own, whether it's, hey, put out an email to um, reach out to me if you have questions, now, a lot of what you say might be, oh, that's a Mr. Carpenter question, I refer you there. Or going to, like I said, meeting at ten o'clock at Rodney's Coffee House, and talking to folks, just hearing what they have to say, reminding them that you're just there as a single board member, not acting on the behalf of the board, but just listening, maybe they, you hear a concern and say, oh, the person you need to talk to, I know, is the high school analytics director, Mr. Schmidt, or that doesn't sound like Miss Latham, you should reach out there again and be clarity on what you thought you heard. Uh, so there's lots of ways board members can do that outside of the meeting, but in the meeting, um, we'll be going down the wrong path, or a path that is just right, that's trouble, if we have this flow of discussion back and forth. In my opinion.
So I guess I should clarify that specifically, so if Michelle was making a presentation and some, and an audience member had a specific question, that's, that would be okay, but not just.
No.
Input, no, 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 I, I, not, not, no, sorry.
Yeah.
I, what I, what I meant to say was in pre, in previous times, with previous chairs, that happened.
Well, even with me, it has happened, but we've had like one or two people at the meeting.
Right, yeah.
And it's been just a question, and we've allowed it, and it's getting to the point where this is not gonna happen anymore, so.
And I, and I didn't mean to.
Right.
I, I didn't mean to.
Right, you just said, right?
Yeah.
That's fine. I get you.
Okay, and then as far as that is concerned then, so I'm still, I understand what you said, Gary, but I still what I'm hearing from new Andrea and is that if they have something to say that is productive and they can come at us with a kind. Well, no, actually, I, what I meant, what I meant to say was, a previous time with previous makeup of the board and previous chairs, that did occur, but.
There would be a comment or a question when we had one or two people here, because usually, we don't ever have any more than five people here.
Right.
Um, and which is fine, doesn't matter how many people here, but in the past, we have allowed, even as me as a chair, a question to somebody had, who had, had made a presentation, or made a comment, or there was something presented. But we're not gonna do that, we're not gonna do that. Because it goes down a road, like just Gary said, it goes down a road where that where it's not gonna be always positive, it's not gonna be, um, if they have questions, it's just easier to do it, and then to do it outside the meeting with the individual that they want to ask a question to.
Well, and it's uh, it's. Right, allow that, it's against the public.
Right, and it's a meeting, like we said, we're, it's a meeting in public, it's not a public meeting. It happened infrequent enough that we never made this statement. So it's happening frequent enough now, and it's disrupting their meetings, and it gets us off track, and we're not, we're not gonna allow it.
Do you wonder why it's happening? I mean, I, I'm very new, so I'm just feeding off of.
No, I, I mean, you have to ask them why they're doing it, I don't know why they're doing it.
No, I'm asking the board.
I have no idea why they're doing it.
No, I'm asking the board. About the people out there, I'm asking the board, you said before you used to listen. To the people, if they had a question, you would take that question.
Yeah, it was, it was like, very frequent, yes.
But now, there's some resistance. This is, this is what I'm feeling, there's some kind of resistance, some kind of negativeness. And in the matter of being negative, you really don't want to hear.
No.
No.
No. We just stated that in the past it has happened occasionally, it wasn't every meeting, and it, it wasn't always positive, it, I mean, I guess. It was a question, so it was not necessarily a negative question, but it was, there was maybe a comment, but it was very frequent, it didn't happen very often. We, and there were times where we said that we weren't gonna answer questions in the past also. Now, we're just declaring that we are not gonna do it because it's not part of our meeting, it's just not what we do during the meeting.
This is the one thing that I would add, you know, if we go pre-COVID. We would go five or six meetings in a row with zero implementation.
That was easy.
Yeah, and, and, and if they were, it was Ms. Marshall or Mr. Coop, you know, a, a staff member.
Or at one time there was a media, it would be like the only person from the public outside of the.
ourselves some talk, it wasn't broadcast, you know, that's a new COVID thing, we, we're doing that, but uh. And so on a rare occasion, again, we'll go back four years, when somebody did show up, like Mark would say, and they had a question. The board probably was a little more flexible, but oh, somebody's here, they got a question. But again, in, if, if we just strict, stick to our board policy, what's best practice. That's what it is, for you guys to do your business in public. We're going an extra step, saying anybody wants to talk about anything for three minutes. Let the board, you know, have your time at the beginning.
It's not something that we just do, I mean, it's, it, I mean, I've attended numerous board meetings in the county, I've watched numerous board meetings from, in, in, in four J. Um, I, you know, it's, it's not, it's not.
Oh, this is the norm.
It's the norm, it's the norm.
I don't know if any.
I mean, we're not doing something different than any other district in the state.
Right, so it's a, it's a norm for the, well, I do know that it's, it's not a requirement for the three minutes.
Correct.
And then nobody has the community. Being able to speak out.
No, 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 I've been to Junction City, I've been to Cydusaw, I've been to uh, four J, I've been to Laney Steve meetings, and there's. They have their, they're kind of the beginning to have public comment and.
Their, their thing that can happen there is you get in hot water, right, let's say Mr. Cooper comes and he's upset, Ms. Pizzola, middle school teacher. And he says, you got this lousy teacher at the middle school, Mister or Miss so and so. Now you violated your policy and allowed somebody to interject in the middle of a meeting. And he's criticizing, you know, something, we're not to do that. When usually, when there's some kind of call out or question, it's gonna be on the verge of appropriate anyways. Um, and it can open the door up to us getting a complaint that, you know, why are you stopping this? This is not allowed in your public meeting, you have board policy that says, only speak at the beginning. This is your time for public comment, this is a meeting held in public, not a public meeting that everybody participates in. So it just can create liability for yourselves, if we're allowing something to occur that.
You know, it's predictable that they're gonna have to, sorry. I ain't know what to say, go for it, Barbara.
I think for me, I'm trying to look at from Lisa, what her concern is, and what I'm hearing, you can correct me, is that. It's your perception that the public does not have a, a medium to voice. And share your opinion, right? Um, if that's correct, then I'm thinking. Gary, Mr. Carpenter has his open forum, we have open dialogue where that individual can reach out to the administrator for the school, the teacher, whomever. If they're following the correct path, right? Um, and we also have a few minutes at the start of this meeting if someone wants to share with us. So outside of that, what, what else are you? Looking or expecting or would like to see. Implemented to allow. Dialogue, because even if they're in the meeting and they share their opinion, it's not a, it's not like they're gonna answer back, we're not gonna say. We agree, we're not gonna take a vote on it, it's just you say what you say and it's, we're silent. So it's gonna be that. Way, so what is it that you're looking for? That you're not seeing happen, because it seems as if you're wanting a dialogue for us to go back and forth with the public. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes and no, so I'm really not. It is just that I want the public to feel that they can talk to us, I know about chain of command, okay, I've got that one down. Okay, but um. I just would really, you know, when I came on here, I thought that as the board, that we would really listen. To the community, to the staff, to the teachers, to the students. And, you know, at our one school board meeting a month. Okay, we don't, we can't say anything, we can't do anything, you know, and I just feel. So I. In the last uh. The last three weeks, I have received. A large number of um. Communications from uh, Bill, particularly building staff and administrators. And I have um, appreciated it very, very much and have responded on an individual basis. And that is exactly how. Staff should interact with each of us, not blasting. Everyone. And, and that is also true of, of, you know. If they have a question about why you voted this way or why you did this. Then they should be reaching out to you as an individual.
Remember, I would say Lisa, that, you know, you say, you don't feel like you're listening to them, if, if at every one of our voting meetings, because we limit it to ten, we had ten speakers speaking for three minutes. Um, that would make more sense, we're not hearing this from everybody. We don't even have, last meeting, we had zero speakers, so nobody's wanting to dialogue with you. And if you want, if what we want to happen is, well, there's a discussion happening, now somebody wants to pipe in. Guess what, whatever Forrest thinks, he's telling us, Michelle's gonna think something different, she's gonna say, oh, like Forrest just said, let me pipe in and give you my two cents, which is the opposite of what Forrest just said. That isn't where we can go.
In our school district, do we have any time where we can openly listen to parents?
You? No. All day long, I'm here, sometimes fourteen hours a day.
And on Sundays.
Yeah.
And they can call me, come down and see me, uh. Anytime. I, I, like I said, somebody emails me, it's rare that I don't get back to them the same day. Super rare for twenty-four hours, they call me, I'm calling back same day, they meet with me, never have I said. I don't want to be with you talking about that. So yeah. Um, I got lots of time. Uh, meeting folks, talk to folks.
I think Lisa may be also thinking of what our responsibilities are. What is it that we're responsible for as a board, that's important, because you're not gonna waste your time listening to something that should truly go to Gary, right? Right, you're gonna say, hey, cut, I hear, I hear you, but this is the direction you need to go.
And I have no problem with that, I have no problem with that, so we have to do.
If it's something that needs to come to the board, then they can voice their opinion upfront, we can take it offline. And address it as a group and come back with a, hey, we have spoken and this is our response. So it's an open forum for them to come in and share, if you feel the community wants to be vocal. Maybe your part is saying, hey, when you hear or see them in town or on social media, hey, are you aware we have an open forum, three minutes? You can come in and share your, your personal views. Maybe that's where you play that part. You know, but it's, it's something that if, as everyone has said, if you start that back and forth, it will be here until nine o'clock. It's not gonna. It's, it's natural, it's not gonna, what in doubt.
And, and when, and when we listen to one person's comment, then we have opened it up and we have to listen to everyone's comment. And I do want to point out that um. Previous board chairs. Did get themselves in some hot water by not realizing that someone was going to criticize. A staff member and um, not shutting it down fast enough, and um. And that was, and there was a lot of criticism. Um, from the staff.
And there's, and it hasn't, no, they haven't yet that I know of, um. With, there was the exception of these letters that we received, except we, I believe we received all the same letters. But there are times where someone will email the entire board. Um, with. A concern, and, you know, when that happens. Generally, you can do whatever you want to it as an individual. But generally, I makes, I make sure that Gary's seen this, because usually, it's not something that we're gonna answer, first of all, if it is something that we're gonna answer. Then we're gonna answer it as a board, as an entire board, you can answer it as an individual if you want, and you make sure you understand, they understand that. You were answering this as an individual, not as the entire board.
Right.
So you can answer emails like that, but. You know, depending on what the concern or question or, you know, um, the comment is, whatever. Um, you know, we may seek legal counsel before we answer it, we've had, we've done that in the past. So, so then we answer it as an entirely, as an entire board. Um, so I'm just, that, that hasn't happened yet, with the exception of these letters, but we, we have gotten in the past emails, and so. That's usually the way it's handled.
Also, I think it'd be remiss if we didn't mention, you know, it's not like our board meetings have all sudden had control. But. We've just got this interjection piece that I think is only, we either need to stop, or it's only gonna grow, and then it's gonna create problems, so. Our meetings, you know, we have a few comments, um, but uh. Again, I see lots of work, you know, on. The news or YouTube or whatever, um, I just don't ever want to get there, so we need to just enforce, here's your time at the beginning. Um, so that we don't end up with, you know, some screaming and yelling back and forth, or different folks in the ground, that is a problem. Because boards conducting their business, you guys are here to watch. Uh, shared for three minutes at the beginning, every board meeting all year long, they can do that, certainly they can come to me with me anytime. Like Mark said, they can, you know, some folks I don't do, they can reach out to you at any time, email, phone call.
I'd love to be able to take credit for the coverage on this, but I didn't, because I still work for Mitford. As board, um, chair, she actually gave it to me. Uh, last December sometime, I think after the last conference, she talked about it at the uh, fall conference, and I. Asked her to email it to me, or after me, it was after one of the board chair cafes that OSBA does, and so she emailed to me, I still have it in my emails. So I just changed, obviously, to make it fit us at the beginning and um. Use what she is, and she does the same exact thing.
So she then also had the um, forms or data. That they use to measure things. Because they were.
That's right, I don't think that's what we, it's not talking about goals.
I'm talking about the beginning, where I talked about that. That part of the beginning. So that, that part I didn't. Do on my own, except for the, I mean, I just changed our vision, because we didn't have Mitford's vision, so it's obviously different.
If you guys, if you. Well, we're not, we'll be voting on it till next Monday, if I know this is the fact we're going with three, these three goals, I'll clean this up a little bit, fix some typos, add a few things. Um, if, but before next, or as we approach next Monday, if folks have other things they want to add to the action plan, certainly talk about it. And I, I should be able to give you a structure at least of what these monitoring things could look like by next Monday, it'll be a while before it's complete, but. I can have that laid out. The way I see it, again, I would focus on those five metrics, it'd probably be thirty minutes long, it wouldn't want to be just all Michelle and I talking, I want to hear from folks out around the district. And again, if there were specific data points you wanted to look at, you could share that with us. You'd make them a standard element in that presentation.
All right. Any other discussion on goal number three? And we do have consensus for, to use goal number three as. Third goal, yes. This. Okay, so then we basically have a consensus to use all three of these goals, and will be on the agenda for next week's meeting. Um, as an action item, uh, we will make a motion and. Go from there.
Oh, there, anything I'd add? Next, as we approach the spring, and we'll have lots of reflection on these goals or whatever, I'm gonna make sure we get this on like the April, May agenda, because it'd be nice if we had these goals set. For twenty-four, twenty-five, by like June. So in August, then our retreat, we're really talking about the action plan, we know what our three goals are, or you're changing one out, maybe in the next. But in, we're gonna do the board self-evaluation this year, we're gonna change the superintendent's evaluation, we're gonna do something around budget. Um, if you wanted to swap one of these. All right.
All right, any other items or closing comments?
Well, I, I referenced this, but I just want to specifically say that I really, really appreciate um, hearing from. Uh, the building staff and administration, um. And I, and I've actually been genuinely moved uh, by some of, some comments, and I just want to say thank you very much.
The only thing I would like to add is just kind of. Us, the emphasis on us all working together, because I feel like at times it can get a little bit like. With each other, and so just there's some, and some offhand comments and some underbreaths and things like that, so just that. Emphasizing the open communication and professionalism that we did tonight, I really appreciate it. We're all very different backgrounds and bring different things to the table, and I think that reads probably some of the best conversations that I've taken from the house.
All right. Yep, if there's nothing else, and there's no objection, we will adjourn.
By the way, I'm going.